And pursuant to the acts of 2023, Chapter Two amended on March 28th of 2025, Governor Moore Healy signed into law an act extending pandemic-related authorizations related to public meetings, allowing remote participation for options for the public bodies through June 30th of 2027. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation from the board, and I will grant permission to Westwood Media Center to record the meeting and to anyone else who wishes to record the meeting. So we're going to jump right into the chair's update. And we have a special town election on Tuesday, September 9th of this year. All precincts will vote at the Westwood High School Gymnasium, and the polls will be open per usual from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This will include the ballot question for debt exclusion override to fund the construction of the new fire station one. This debt exclusion under Mass Prop 2 and 1/2 law would allow the town to temporarily increase property taxes beyond the usual limits to cover the costs associated with borrowing for this capital project. Early voting will be held at the Westwood Police Station in Gillette Meeting Room, Wednesday, September 3rd from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Thursday, September 4th, again from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and Friday, September 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Looking into September, further into September, we will be holding Westwood Day on Saturday, September 20th. Many volunteers are needed to hold this event. Volunteers, for anybody who's been watching the Little League World Series, are celebrated as part of the Little League community, and to volunteer for Westwood Day, because that's what makes community, please visit the Westwood Day page on the town website. We could really use a hand that ends up falling on quite a few people. So setup will be the afternoon of the September 19th and the morning of September 20th. The activities during the day will be between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., and then there'll be cleanup after 3:00 p.m. on the 20th. We'd love to have people sign up for a two and a half or three hour shift, and receive, anyone who does will get a T-shirt and our sincere gratitude, and honestly, that really is what makes community. It's a great event. We hope for weather like we have today, and we would take any adult or student volunteers. There are places on the website for you to click to volunteer to do so. Next up, we'll be talking about the planning board. There is a vacancy due to a recent resignation, and the planning board has an immediate opening for a member to serve through the 26th Spring Annual Town Election. The planning board will discuss the vacancy at their upcoming meeting tomorrow night, and the posting will be available on the town's website with information on how to apply. Planning Board members participate in application review during public meetings, typically held on Tuesday evenings twice a month. The selected individual would be expected to review applications and materials electronically in advance of each meeting and participate in board meetings which are currently held via Zoom. Experience with plan reviews, land use, zoning, engineering, or service on a municipal board or commission is encouraged and desirable. So if that is something that interests you in getting involved in town government, please submit an application to the planning board through the town's website. Lastly, with respect to the Shein tennis courts. As you know, the tennis courts in the Shein school sort of area there, they're in rough shape. So we have made the decision we are going to remove them in September. The work should take about a week to complete, and it will include removing the tennis courts and the surrounding fencing. And then once the removal is complete, DPW will see the area for grass. DPW will notify the Rec Department and the School Department regarding any potential impacts to recreation or youth sports programs, but this is something that is probably more of a hazard at this point than it is a help. So we've made the decision to remove that. And that at this moment is the chair's update. Molly, I'm going to turn it to you for the town administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two updates. First, the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, has awarded the town of Westwood the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. This marks the 28th consecutive year that Westwood has achieved this prestigious recognition, which reflects the town's ongoing commitment to transparency, accountability, and excellence in financial management. The town would like to congratulate the finance department, both current and those members who have served over the past 28 years for their professionalism, dedication, and attention to detail and preparing and maintaining the town's financial reports. This achievement not only reflects the department's technical expertise, but also its steadfast commitment to ensuring that Westwood residents, businesses, and stakeholders can have full confidence in the town's fiscal stewardship. And then second, for a paving update, the paving work originally scheduled for Washington Street has been adjusted slightly. Weather permitting, the new paving schedule will run Sunday, August 24th through Saturday, August 30th, from 7:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. One lane of traffic will remain open during work hours, and the open lane direction will change based on the paving operations. Police details will be on site to assist with the traffic control, and we appreciate the public's patience as we work to complete this important work. And those are my two updates.
Let's hope they have as much wonderful weather as we've had for the last 10 days or so, and maybe they can get that done a little bit sooner.
Yeah.
All right. Next, we're going to move to public and press, and I just want to remind folks as to the guidelines for participation and the delineation between a public meeting and a public hearing. So at each select board meeting, we will include a 15-minute public comment period following the chair and town administrator updates. During the public comment portion, we will allow residents to participate in one of the following two ways. You can either speak live or be unmuted by using the raise hand function in the Zoom area, and you can be unmuted and recognized, or you can submit written comments into a Q and A function. Either way, you must identify yourself by stating your full name and address, or do so in writing, and each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. We're not going to respond to questions during this time, but we will listen to those comments and the concerns shared by the public for future consideration and deliberation. For public hearings, residents will be allowed to comment and ask questions on the agenda item as those hearings are opened and deliberated on. Same process in terms of the ability to speak live using the raise hand function or submit a comment or question in the Zoom Q and A. Again, in all cases, need you to have your full name and address, and there'll be a maximum of three minutes. So with that, I will look to the Q and A and/or the attendee list to see if anyone has any questions. I see Amy Lowney has a question. Tish, would you be so kind as to unmute Amy and allow her to ask her question?
Well, this could be that she has an agenda item coming up for Juicy Greens, but I will allow her to speak.
Sure. Amy, can you hear us and can you, and you, are you unmuted?
Hello. Hello, everyone. This is Amy Lowney from Juicy Greens. I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that we are here representing on behalf of Juicy Greens, and that I didn't mention, I didn't hear you guys mention Juicy Greens on the docket, so I wanted to make sure that we weren't included for today.
You are included, and we will be getting to you. Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
And Amy, you can press there you go, lower that hand. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Give it another minute or two for folks to submit any questions via the Q and A. I'm seeing none in the Q and A, and I see no hands, further hands raised in the attendee list. I see Karen Flynn has joined us. Welcome, Karen. And we are going to move to scheduled action as I'm going to close the public comment period. First up, we have Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza has a request for a new Section 12 All Alcohol Common Victroler License, Entertainment License, as well as a change of manager. Karen, you want to take us through this one?
I will. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Rob, do you want me to make a motion to open the hearing?
That would be a good idea.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I forgot this was a public hearing. Yes, there you go.
I think I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza DBA. No, Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza.
I second that.
All right, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The hearing is open.
Thank you. Anthony says before you tonight, as a result of a new ownership application due to a bankruptcy settlement order, but, and the Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC has purchased the three Massachusetts Anthony's Coal Fired Pizzas. And typically in all the other towns, they are license transfers, but Westwood does not do license transfers. We consider all new owners as a new application, and so we've asked Anthony's to file for a new application with us along with the entertainment license. In this instance, at the other Anthony's sales, the staff is staying in place. The management, manager of record is staying on. In Westwood's case, Christopher Dymek, who was the manager of record, did leave in May, and we have Timothy Farrell as our proposed manager of record. Timothy has had a successful quarry as well as tip certification and has been with Anthony since 2017 in different capacities and as manager since 2024. The alcohol review committee met and unanimously recommended approval of this application for Timothy as the manager of record and the new Section 12 license. I see that attorney Tyler Hensler representing Anthony's is here, as well as Timothy Farrell, the proposed manager. It should the board have any questions for them. All menu items and operations are staying the same. Local staff is staying the same. The only change is the manager of record.
So point of order here, Mr. Counsel, Pat, do we need to take these as individual hearings for the Section 12 Victroler License and then for the change of manager?
You should do them individually so the record's clear.
Okay. So.
If I could add one more thing. In the past, the ABCC has requested a letter from the board stating that the total of Westwood alcohol regulations does not allow for transfers. And I would be requesting, should the board approve this application, I would be requesting a similar letter on behalf of this application.
All right. Any questions from my colleagues with respect to these two requests?
None from me. Thank you.
Thank you for me, Rob.
All right. So let's handle the Section 12 All Alcohol License and the Entertainment License.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Yes. Yes.
It's a public hearing, so you have to ask if the public has any questions or comments.
Fair enough. I will open the hearing to public questions with respect to Anthony's Coal Fired. I see no questions in the Q and A. And I see no hands raised in the participant attendees list. I have no questions from my colleagues.
I'm ready to make a motion, Rob.
Thank you, Joe. Please do.
I'd like to make the motion, Select Board, to take the following actions. Approve the Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC DBA's Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza for a new Section 12 All Alcohol Common Victulas License and Entertainment License pending the following issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the Building Department and approval from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. In addition.
I'm sorry?
Let me grab the second part, and then I think we'll move on. In addition, authorize a fixing of select board electronic signatures to the Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC DBA Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, Section 12 All Alcohol Common Victulas License, Entertainment License, ABCC Local Licensing Authority Form, and a letter to the ABC confirming the no alcohol license transfer in Westwood.
With apologies, Joe, for the interruption. I second that.
All right, roll call vote. Joe?
Understood, Mary Ann. Yes. Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And now, Joe, if you would please make a motion with respect to the manager of record.
Yep, I'd like to make the motion, we approve Anthony Farrell as the manager of record for Florida.
Timothy Farrell?
I'm sorry. Timothy Farrell as the manager of record for Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC DBA, Anthony Coal Fired Pizza, 119 University Ave.
I second that.
All right, roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Timothy, congratulations. Welcome to your new ownership, and thank you very much for being here and being part of the Westwood community.
Motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Let's go and let Rob do his thank yous.
Sorry if I jumped the gun.
No problem. Are we ready to rock and roll, Rob?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chair, to close the public hearing on August 18th, 2025, for a new Section 12 All Common Alcohol Common Victual License, Entertainment License, and a change of manager of record for Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC DBA, Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, 119 University Ave.
I second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. All right. Thank you both for being here, and.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you both.
All right, so we are now turning to Juicy Greens and a similar Common Victroler License. And so Karen, I'm going to let you take it away and bring Ms. Lowney in.
I'd be happy to make a motion, Rob, to open the public hearing if you'd like.
That would be wonderful, Joe. Thank you very much.
I'll make the motion, open the hearing for a new Common Victual License for Juicy Greens DBA, Juicy Greens 305 Washington Street.
I second that.
All right, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Karen, take it away.
Thank you very much, and I promise this one won't be as much of a mouthful. Welcome to Juicy Greens, to Westwood. They are a, I'm going to say all this correctly. Amy, it's a superfood smoothies, cold-pressed juices, and wellness bowls. They're also working on a few more items with the Health Department, perhaps a sandwich or two that's being worked out right now as far as equipment. But right now, the menu before you is the approved menu with the Health Department. It's for a dining-in restaurant with 20 indoor seats, and they will have takeout as well. As I said, the food permit is pending. All public safety inspections have gone great, and they are proposing hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and this is located in the old Bertie's Ice Cream location on Washington Street. Amy Lowney has been a pleasure to work with, and she's here tonight. If the board has any questions.
Questions from either of my colleagues for Amy or Karen?
I'd love to ask a question. Welcome, Amy. Thank you for being here. Welcome to Westwood. I'm looking at your menu, and I'm really excited that you're going to be in the neighborhood. For those who haven't seen the menu, maybe you could just let folks know, what is the concept behind Juicy Greens?
I just want to say thank you. I'm also a member of this community. I've been living in Westwood since 2013, right on Canton Street, and my kids have been part of the school system in Westwood as well. So our menu consists of superfood smoothies, cobles, like acai balls, avocado toast, arepas. We're going to have a small line of coffee and tea, matcha tea. And we try to source all of our ingredients locally and high quality. We've been doing this, my husband and I have been doing this since 2018, when we first opened our first location in Jamaica Plain. And then, you know, with the help of our amazing team, we have been able to open up. This is, this is our number seven location, and we'll be opening up our number eight location by the end of August. It is a work, is a, is a love, love, is a work filled with purpose, is a work filled with purpose. And I'm an educator, and my husband is a local physician. And so we're doing this because we want to bring more healthy food and drinks to our community here in Westwood as well.
Amazing. Thank you. I think this will be a very welcome addition to Westwood, and congratulations on all your success, and thank you for bringing Juicy Greens to Westwood. When do you open?
We're hoping to open this Monday, Monday, the 25th.
Fabulous.
Yeah. Yeah, it was an easy transition going from an ice cream shop into a juice bar. It was, you know, because everything was already there, so we just did like a little, you know, makeover. We made this, we're making the space look a little more juicy, more, you know, originally from Colombia, so we're trying to, you know, make it more colorful and a little more fun.
Awesome. Thank you.
Joe, any questions for Amy?
I'm good. Thank you, Rob.
Well, I, Mary Ann stole a lot of the things that I was going to compliment you on. The menu looks spectacular, and I imagine your other locations are killing it if you're growing at that rapid rate. So I think you'll do really, really well here in Westwood. So congratulations on number, I like that Westwood is lucky number seven and.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain, let me open a public comment period. Is there anyone from in attendance who has any questions regarding this application, this public hearing? Amy, that's going to be a brutal commute from the Canton Street over.
I know. I was thinking like, I'm going to be walking, riding my bike.
All right, seeing no questions during this public hearing, Joe, I would entertain a motion.
I'm happy to. The Select Board to approve Juicy Greens Incorporated DBA Juicy Greens for a new Common Victual License at 305 Washington Street, pending issuance of a food permit from the Health Department. And Tish, I'm going to add these words, which we've done in the others, although Karen mentioned pending public safety inspections. So that's issuance of food permit from the Health Department and pending public safety inspections and approvals. In addition, authorize a fixing of the Select Board's electronic signatures to the Common Victular's license.
And I enthusiastically second that.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Mary Ann, you're going to beat me there on opening day because I have someplace I need to be on the 25th, but Amy, you'll see me on the 26th for sure.
I'll see you there.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Joe, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd be happy to. I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on August 18th, 2025, for a new Common Victual License for Juicy Greens Incorporated, DBA Juicy Greens, 305 Washington Street.
I second that.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That hearing is now closed. All right.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you. Bye-bye, everybody.
Good luck.
Okay. And just to clarify, this one is not a public hearing. This is just a request for an hours change. Is that right, Karen?
That's correct. Yes.
All right, so why don't you take us through what's going on here and what you'd like to see or what the applicant would like to see?
Sure. Tish, there was a slight change of plans as far as a Ryan George in the attendees.
Okay, I'll bring him in.
Thank you. The Westwood Chipotle is looking to change their hours to be in line with their national campaign. They're make, nationwide, they're changing their hours to be open until 11:00. And so that's what we have here. Currently, they're open from 10:45 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, and they're looking just to extend their evening hours to 11:00 p.m. It's very much in line with several businesses down in University Station. And Ryan is a licensing agent with Chipotle, and he's joined us tonight instead of the local manager who had a conflict tonight.
Okay. Questions for Ryan from either of my colleagues?
I'm good.
I have no questions.
I imagine you get in that last 15-minute window, you probably were, no, like last hour window, you probably get a pretty good amount of REIT's takeout type stuff, huh?
Yep.
Well, if there are no questions from my colleagues, I have none myself. So, Joe, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to. I'd like to make a motion, Select Board, approve the change of hours request for Chipotle Mexican Grill LLC, doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill 217 University Ave. In addition, authorize a fixing of the Select Board electronic signatures to the Common Victular's license.
I second that.
All right, roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Mark, for being here, or Ryan, sorry, and welcome back to Westwood. Look forward to you being open a little bit longer and driving a little more revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, next up, we have the annual St. Mark's Ephesians Orthodox Church for their one-day special beer and wine license for Greek Fest. And I know Karen, you are joining us as well, and Father George is here as well.
Yes, he should be. Yes. I cannot even believe we're in September, we're talking about September already. A day like today kind of feels like a little.
Father George in attendance, but I can tell you that that we will hope for weather like today for that event because that is one that draws quite a crowd every year.
Absolutely, and they run it like a fine-oiled machine at this point. We have a September 6th, Saturday, September 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and a Sunday, September 7th, from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., same hours as typically. They provided three tip-certified alcohol service staff this year. And they are, I've also hired a police detail for pedestrian traffic on both days. They have already been issued their tent permit for their 140 times, 140 feet by 40 feet tent that they have annually. That'll require an inspection after it's installed, and they have already applied for their food permit. The alcohol, the alcohol review committee met and unanimously recommended approval. As always, it's been a wonderful event for the town. And I don't know if he's here just yet, but. And I don't know if he's he's here just yet, but. I could keep tap dancing if I need to.
Let's just see. Well, we know that it's held at three forty Claver Street and. They've always got some fantastic music and dance performances. Some of the best, most authentic heroes and still, I mean, the Slub Lucky is amazing. The Baklava is just out of this world. I mean, I go every year for the food and enjoy all the rest of the event as well. So. I don't know if Father George is gonna make it, but. Why don't we go ahead and I would entertain a motion, Joe, if you are so inclined.
I'd be happy to, Rob. I'd like to make a motion, select board to grant approval. And by the way, Rob, I agree with everything you said about the food. It is fantastic. I'm the select board to grant approval to Father George. Camber, it is on behalf of Saint Mark's for one day special beer, we're like wine license. To serve alcohol on Saturday, September sixth. Two thousand twenty five from eleven AM to eight PM and Sunday, September seventh. From twelve PM to seven PM. At the time and and the time to set up and remove alcohol. From the premises from twelve PM on Friday, September fifth, two thousand twenty five through Monday, September eighth, two thousand twenty five at two PM. Pending public safety inspections. Food permit issuance and the, I think Karen, you said the tent inspection.
Yes.
I second that.
Excellent. Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Mary Anne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. And again, we hope you have some fantastic weather because I know we'll all be looking forward to being there.
And that's all I have for you tonight.
You brought some good stuff though, Karen. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Next up, we have Fox Meadow Estates. There's an emergency access easement needed at twenty five Fox Meadow Drive and three hundred Fox Hill Street. I know there was some question as to whether or not this needed to be potentially continued or moved to our September eighth select board meeting. Molly, Pat, do we want to proceed with this or?
We're actually gonna recommend moving this to the September eighth agenda. The town planner Elijah Romulus had a conflict come up today and. Was able unable to attend and as he's the subject matter expert, we'd like to have him here for it.
I think that's a prudent move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, both. We will move that to our September eighth meeting. Next up. We have. Some traffic and rules amendments. There's the stop sign requests at Willow and Colburn Street. I believe this was before us once before, but maybe has a slight modification. Do I have that right? And I think I saw Officer Baker and. The attendees, bringing him in for for this.
And I I can give us Frank is coming in. I can give us a an update. At your, you are correct, at the July ninth meeting, the board approved a stop sign at the intersection of Willer Willow Street and Colburn Street. The intent of that action was to create a three way stop. However, the wording of the original motion authorized. One stop sign rather than a full set of three. So since then, Officer Baker has followed up with the request or to confirm the original intent for three traffic. Traffic signs. Based on that clarification, we're bringing this item back before you. To request the approval of the two additional stop signs at that intersection establishing the intended three way stop. So. Officer Baker is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
Do either of my colleagues have questions with respect to this?
I don't have any questions, but Frank, thanks for taking a second look at that. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I I echo that and appreciate the additional clarification and signage, which is before us tonight.
Officer Baker, I just had one quick question. I don't know if it was you did the map or somebody else did the map and just. The one that looks like it's on Colburn Street itself seems to be in from the corner, but that would that that would just be at the corner. Yes?
So let me just share my screen because I was actually out there last week and I took some photos. As the perspective, if you're like driving to that intersection. So I think that will help as a visual to clarify. What we're looking to do. So just give me a moment here. I'm trying to figure out how to share.
So you should be able to in in the sort of footer bar of your Zoom window, if you sort of hover over that, there should be a share button sort of dead center?
Yep. All right. Can everybody see that?
We can.
Okay, very good. So you're looking at the street right now? You're looking at the photo of Colburn Street, correct?
No, actually, it looks like we see your list of photos, the thumbnails, but we're not looking at anything that's been opened.
Okay.
We might need to just drag it into the screen somewhere.
Let me know if that comes on.
Still seeing the same list of thumbnails. There you go.
All right. See if I can. Yep. All right, perfect. Okay. So going back on track. So this is a picture of Colburn Street. As you can see, a little further up, you see the street sign of Willow Street. So that would be coming from Pond Street. And then the next street up after Willow Street is Baker. So what we're looking to do is put a stop sign here for the street. I'm gonna cycle over. This is Willow Street currently. So there's already a stop sign there. So obviously, this is a T intersection. We have one stop sign already installed. And then this is the other side of Colburn Street. So we would be looking to install another, a second stop sign, three total, probably over near that fire hydrant.
Got it. Okay.
And then I just as another, a couple of extra photos here. So this is going up the hill because Colburn's a pretty steep slope. So this is approaching Willow Street from Pond Street. And then that's your visual as you crest over that hill. So you're kind of like right on top of the intersection at that point.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right. I would entertain a motion if there's nothing further from my colleagues.
I'd be happy to. Select board approved the amendment to the traffic rules and orders specifically. Schedule zero three dash isolated stop signs for two additional stop signs. Added to the intersection of Willow Street and Coburn Street, making it a three way stop intersection as Officer Baker has described.
I second that.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Mary Anne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Officer Baker. Appreciate you being here and the pictures were very helpful.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Take care, Frank.
All right. Next up, if you remember back in, I believe it was. May or June, we had the personnel policies, latest revisions. For us to consider, but we were a little bit busy at that point prepping for annual town meeting. So we. Deferred this to tonight's meeting. And so Molly, I will. Ask you to take us through the overview of this and. Then I will open it to questions.
Excellent. So just by way of background, the town maintains a number of. Personnel policies governing employment practices for our town and. Over the past year, it's been a project of mine to take a comprehensive review and rewrite of all of our existing policies, which. Their update, they had been updated on a regular basis, maybe every two to three years, but a grand overhaul had not taken place since. About two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So this process included revising existing policy, drafting new policies. Consulting with departments and other communities and incorporating best practices in municipal personnel management. So the draft revised policies were presented to the personnel board at their meeting, January twenty eighth of this year. Following that, a townwide Zoom session was held to give employees the opportunity to ask questions and receive clarification on the proposed changes. The personnel board subsequently held a public hearing on April fourteenth. And voted to recommend the select board adopt the revised policies. Some of the key changes include formally adopting the town's parental leave policy. Clarifying the town's overtime policy. And introducing a health insurance opt out policy which provides a stipend to employees. Who opt out of participation in the town's health insurance plan. It's important to note that these policies only apply to non represented employees. For union employees, only the policies not otherwise addressed in their union contracts apply. So an example of that would be. The town sexual harassment policy applies to all employees, whereas the vacation policy applies only to non union employees. The town currently has six unions, five of which are on the same contract cycle. Their contracts expire next June. As part of a best practice, personnel policies for non union employees should be updated. Following the completion of collective bargaining to ensure consistency between the union and non union employment terms. So. It would be my intention to undertake another update of these personnel policies, though not to this scale. Following the next round of negotiations for FY twenty seven to twenty nine. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions about the policies.
I would certainly appreciate the next time we do this to not have to review all forty five policies and.
Yes, the I would say the the plan would be to review if anything changed with the union contracts to specifically, you know, change those policies. And then to get on a review schedule of reviewing three to five per year. So then you're not doing forty five at once.
Were there any questions with respect to the changes made to the personnel policies?
I think. I'm sorry, from the staff?
No, I'm actually talking to my colleagues.
Okay, I was sorry. Go ahead.
I have some questions, Rob.
By all means, sure.
Yeah, Mary Anne, thanks. Mary Anne. Molly, thanks for making the changes to the. Agreement leave. I think you made one or two to the others. My only concern at this point, as I said to Molly, we didn't get to finish it, is that. I am not in favor of granting new employees three weeks of leave when they come on board. Molly changed it. From the first draft to two weeks, but there's a section that states. On page three, points nine and ten. There should, there can be exceptions. I don't agree with the exceptions. I believe starting employees should have the two weeks period. The ability to approve exceptions. That's gonna lend itself to some confusion. I I think it should be cut and dry that I would not have this exception. You you're gonna get jammed up. You're gonna grant someone an exception and then.
So my understanding is that's not a change to the current policy. That is the actual current policy. And and, you know, further. I think the town administrator should have some flexibility when you're hiring someone. Who has been in a role and has earned, you know, multiple weeks of vacation. I think that that is something that is, you know, standard for being able to. Make that the offer and the hire to get them to accept. We don't wanna keep to, in fact. I think we did that likely with Molly and Stephanie. So I think it's existing policy. If I'm not mistaken. Is that true, Molly?
It is correct. Yes.
Yeah, I thought we were discussing entry level positions, not contractual. Positions which Molly and others, as you mentioned, I'm just talking about the entry level position.
I don't know that it's.
The policy includes all positions and so myself, obviously, I'm on a contract, but. I'm trying to think of an example who is not, you know, the the library director is not on a contract. The town planner is not on a contract. So there's still department head level positions. That we would need that flexibility to offer to in order to recruit really good talent.
So my que- question, Rob, through you is, so if there's an entry level position at Town Hall. And you felt they deserve three weeks vacation, you would give them three weeks vacation?
If an entry level, the hypothetical would be if we were hiring an entry level position. If the person had no work experience, I would say they would definitely start at two weeks vacation. If they had a number of years, say five to ten years of. Work as an administrative assistant in a different community and they were coming to Westwood because. They heard how great it is here and they wanted to work here. I would be inclined to give them more vacation based on their years of municipal service.
Rob, I guess I just have to fall back to my experience in the medical center. Doesn't matter where you come from or how much experience you have. You're the newbie. You get the two weeks vacation. I think I think it's it comes down to being frugal and I think this is just one of those steps that. How we can show the public that we are being frugal.
Mary Anne, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I do. I I hear what you're saying, Joe. But number one, this is our existing policy. And number two, and more importantly. We want to be able to attract good talent. In the positions that we have. So in the scenario where we are, for example. Looking for someone, let's say it's the finance director position. We want somebody with. At least seven years experience and they're coming with three weeks of vacation. We're not gonna get that person if we bump them down to two weeks. So I I think having the allowance for the exception. To bump up to more than two is is prudent. And in the best interest of the town so that we can get the talent that we need.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you said, Mary Anne. In fact, I agree with you a hundred percent. My concern is just with the entry level position. I think we ought to have some sort of stratification here between those. I don't, I don't want to see someone get hired in an entry level position. And then come to find, and I always thought of vacation time as an earned benefit. But if you hire someone in into that position. And then come to find out they're not as experienced as you thought they were. Then I think that's gonna create problems. So maybe this ought to be revisited for. To stratify between entry level positions and other professional positions.
I I would hope that the town administrator that we hire. And I I certainly trust Molly in this role as the interim certainly as well. Would have the type of discretion that the current policy allows to not be. Indiscriminately handing out that extra week of vacation. And I think if we make it based on, you know, the, and I think the the town planner is a great example. Where we had a vacancy and, you know, based on the years of experience, if that was a. Something that was going to be a nonstarter, if the person had already had achieved three weeks. Of vacation time where they are coming from. And they said, you know what, even if even if we were excited about the candidate. And if that was the the deal breaker, I don't want to hamstring. Our town administrator from being able to secure great talent for us, but I trust our town administrator to make the decision. That's that's something that I think falls pretty squarely in their purview. So that's that's my belief on it.
Got it.
And 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 it's existing policy as well.
Well, just because it's existing doesn't mean it's right.
Ah, it's never too late to turn around on a dead end street. I just don't view this one as a dead end street. That's all.
That's my two cents on it.
Okay.
And the other thing I want to add, Molly, I think you agreed, I think that. All of these policies should have at the end a section for. should have at the end a section for uh all of them individually submitted by next review date, revision dates, and approved by the board on such and such a date.
I have no problem incorporating that.
Okay, and I did not see anything on cell phones. Is that on your list? Because it should be on your list.
Yep, we have a town issued cellphone and tablet policy. That's policy five oh six.
Okay.
And I did see your note about use while driving and it is referenced in here that um it's Massachusetts state law that you don't use your phone while driving. And so it's in, in unless the device is hand free mode, the town prohibits employees from using their smartphones devices while using their vehicles.
Okay, and I, I'm assuming then it also includes, which we had to do at the hospital, is cell phones cannot be used in locker rooms.
We, I'm trying to think, we would have locker rooms, I guess, at the police and fire station?
And the DPW.
And the DPW would be the White House. Um I'm just searching to see, do you mean not used in the locker room?
Yes, just hel- help me clarify. Are you talking about video calls? I would hope, I would agree that that would be an inappropriate use of a of a town device. However, i- if you're talking about um being able to take or place a phone call, um, I'm just, I, I want some clarity on what you're, what you're asking there.
Clarity we ran into, Rob, is people taking pictures of other people.
Oh, gosh. Um, that would be covered in the sexual harassment policy, I would say. Because it is not okay. It's, I mean, town issued cell phones and devices are, this policy is specifically for town issued cell phones. The idea of someone taking pictures of anybody in a locker room would fall squarely under the town sexual harassment policy is not okay in any way, shape or form.
Is that satisfactory, Joe? I mean, I, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify. Valid concern raised with respect to your experience previously.
Yeah.
And I think there is a policy that prohibits that. I just don't know that it is the town issued device policy that you're referencing here. Because I don't want those, I don't want those pictures being taken with personal or private uh town issue.
That's, that's what we had to face, Rob.
Okay, alright. Alright, so can I get a motion to adopt the revised personnel policies?
Still moved.
Second.
Alright, we'll call Joe.
No.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes. Okay. Alright, next up, going to give an update with respect to um Fire Station One. Now, as I mentioned in the chair's update, we have a special town election coming up on September ninth and uh we have been doing uh quite a bit of uh community outreach and, and I know I have been uh approached in, in any number of settings. Um, the phone and, you know, even at dinner down on the Cape. Um, and I'm sure that each of you has had many a conversation out in the public wherever you have been. Um, and one of the questions that I believe we've, we've gotten quite frequently of late since we are holding another town special election is why are we bringing forward the exact same project that we did um in June? And the answer is fairly simple. We have a split decision. We have a community that overwhelmingly approved by the two thirds majority and then some at town meeting that this project moved forward. We also have a special town election result that um did not pass the financing required to authorize the debt exemption. So we have a split community and it's very common that when you have a valid initiative that fails following a, an approved project at an annual town meeting that the project comes forward for another vote. Now, I've also heard and been asked, why are we doing that without making any changes? Now, we held a listening session on, I believe it was June twenty sixth, correct me Molly if I have the date wrong. Um, and then we needed to be able to have a conversation at our July ninth meeting. At that meeting, we considered uh another proposal, another opportunity to uh locate the site, uh project in a different location. Um, however, the estimate for what that would cost between the time delays and inflation as well as the redesign and um just the general inflation for both one materials and labor was it was gonna cost somewhere in the neighborhood of five to seven million dollars more than what we currently have as a thirty eight million dollar project. Now, we are holding fast at that thirty eight million because we're in a very fortunate position that our contractors have agreed to hold their bid pricing through September fifteenth of this year, something they were not required to do. And so we have a, the good fortune to be able to bring that back. Now, just because we brought forward the special town election movement at our July ninth meeting doesn't mean we stop thinking about ways to potentially improve the project or um address some of the concerns that we've heard as we've listened to residents in the many forums that we've had discussions over this over the past two years. Um, and so one of the things that we've asked um Doran Whittier to take a look at is cutting three of the bathrooms. There are currently, I believe, thirteen total bathrooms in the project between the three floors amongst, amongst all of the floors, um some of which are required public bathrooms and others that are um, you know, uh more in the um work areas for the firefighters. So um, that is something that we are looking at. I can tell you and maybe Don or Chip can speak to what the estimate is in terms of savings, but I don't this is not going to be a game changer with respect to the project. In fact, if you, even if you cut two million dollars out of the project, and by no means are three bathrooms going to cut two million dollars. Um, even if you cut two million dollars out of this, for the average homeowner, that would probably equate to, and, and uh Molly, if you are able to um provide the actual numbers, that'd be great. But I think it, it saves about twenty dollars a year for the average homeowner in Westwood. So um, but we're not talking about cutting two million dollars out of this project. We're talking about cutting three bathrooms, which some people have highlighted as, you know, e- the excesses of this project. Um, and then the other thing that we're looking at is not furnishing the fitness center with the gym equipment as part of the project. Um, I've had conversations with the chief. I've had conversations with Assistant Chief McCarthy who's here, as well as Anthony Burke in the Fire Union. And they agree that to move this forward, they are willing to sacrifice that and use their existing equipment in that facility and then apply for the uh very same grant that paid for that equipment the first time. So there are things that we are looking to do to be able to address some of the concerns of residents as to the, you know, size, scope and perception that we're just moving forward and we're tone deaf. No, we, where we are aligned and where we are unwavering is our commitment to the men and women of the Fire Department and the operational mission readiness. And I think I can say that with great confidence that the three of us have never wavered from that. And that the working group that Joe was a part of that put this together did so incredibly mindfully and they did not have unnecessary wasteful or opulence built into this. So with that, that's the update on FS one. Molly, can you just confirm that uh my number there, twenty million dollars, if you saved uh two million, I mean, sorry, they offer the thirty eight million dollars, if we reduce that project by two million dollars, it would only end up saving the average homeowner twenty dollars a year?
Twenty dollars per year over the thirty year bond, yeah.
And Don, Chip, I don't know if there are any preliminary estimates as to what the savings from those two pieces might be in terms of eliminating three bathrooms and not including the furnishing of the fitness center as part of the project. I, I'm, I'm guessing it probably doesn't add up to more than a hundred thousand dollars at the, at the max.
But, so when you, when you, when you look at the toilet rooms in particular, in the fact that you have all the infrastructure, that being the piping in the mechanical systems built in there, it would seem to be short sighted to remove that right now if you wanted to put toilet rooms in, in the future, right? You, you open the station, you have three less toilet rooms and over time you're like this just isn't working, you know, we either have more staff or the way the facility is operating, we need to have more toilet rooms. So by leaving the, the piping, the mechanical, the electrical all in those spaces, then what you're, what you're removing would be the fixtures, the toilets, the sinks, the uh uh the trash bins, things of that nature. Um, and perhaps uh the finishes, right? Because they really become storage rooms now. So you're probably anywhere and these are rough. It, it could be ten to twenty thousand per space, so it could be, you know, thirty to sixty thousand dollars. Uh, can't believe it would be any more than sixty on the high end.
Right.
For that. Um, the, the equipment don't have that number right in front of us, but we can certainly um pull that together and share that. Um, the fitness room equipment.
Right.
Um, with you.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I think those are things that we should be considering um as we move forward, but that doesn't ultimately change the number that was approved at town meeting and what we will be looking for in the way of a debt exemption at our special town election. But, you know, we have heard people ask questions as to why hasn't anything changed? We are exploring how we might do that. But we need time to be able to do that. And ultimately, the type of changes that we're talking about are not going to be material in terms of the overall number. This is going to be, the, the project as designed, the outer envelope, which has always been driven by the apparatus floor, is what is driving this. And the second story is the most efficient design is the box on top of a box. So we're not talking about changing the footprint or the, the, the sort of scale and skin of this building. We're talking about, can we remove things that people have at times questioned as being excessive? So that is the update with respect to FS one. Um, Mary Ann, Joe, do either of you have any questions?
I have a couple of comments, but I'm sure Mary Ann does, and I'll defer to Mary Ann because I'm always enlightened by her comments.
Uh, I, I don't at this point, uh, Joe. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'll actually defer to you here.
Okay. Thanks, Mary Ann. Um, Rob, I, I've experienced same things that you have. Thank God, not during dinner down the Cape, but I've had, I'm sure all of us have had the same experience. I do, I, I, I tell them three things, Rob. I say, first of all, if we decide to go for a new set of plans, that alone, Don, I'm taking this number from you, is gonna cost between two and a half and three million dollars just for the new set of plans. Number two, I tell them is, we were very fortunate that the G C agreed to keep the price until September fifteenth. I mean, that's, that's spectacular in my book. If we did nothing as a select board, I believe, and I tell the people this, I would be remiss if I didn't, we would be remiss if we didn't do anything because we get one more shot at doing this. One more swing at the baseball. If we didn't do it, we'd be remiss. We have to do this now. And lastly, as far as the bathrooms go, mamma mia. If you've ever done on call, and I've done on call, and you always try to get the on call room that has the bathroom in it. Because if you come up short, and yeah, I've had a few of those, and especially at my age, uh, it's no fun running down the hall at four o'clock in the morning to use the head. And of course, sometimes there'll be somebody in there. So I don't see anything at all wrong with the number of bathrooms that we have on this project. And I'm tired of talking about it. If, if you haven't done on call, that's unfortunate. But when you do on call, it's nice having that facility in your on call room, period. That's my comments, Rob.
Thank you, Joe. Respect your service and certainly am never questioning what your experience has been as a member of the department. Chip, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, uh, so I did look it up. I, I, for the fitness equipment, a- anywhere, we had a placeholder of twenty to thirty thousand for, for that equipment, depending on how you build it out.
Right, so as I mentioned before, I, you know, I, I don't think we even come close to a hundred thousand dollars in savings. So that thirty eight point one is maybe thirty eight at the end of the day. The other thing I would like, and I, Joe, the other thing that I add to conversations when I talk to folks is you know, remember that this town has a tremendous track record of seeking out, finding, applying for and receiving grant monies at both the state and federal level.
Absolutely.
Look no further than that Pine Hill School, which costs ninety million dollars to build and it's only costing the taxpayers sixty, sixty five million dollars. So, you know, we will take that same approach to try and find any and all monies available to help defray the impact to our resident taxpayers. But the reality is, we cannot apply for any of those unless and until we have an approved project. So we are moving forward with what we believe to be the most fiscally responsible action, which is, as Joe just mentioned, bringing forward that project again for another vote because we do have a split decision between the two prior votes. So that is why we're proceeding to our September ninth uh special election. And that is all I have in the way of an update. There are no actions required with respect to FS one tonight.
Rob, do you mind if I make a, a comment?
Absolutely. I mean, I don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. No, I, I, I just want to echo e- everything that you've said, um, and, and Joe, your comments as well. Um, I, I just want to reiterate that I agree that I think with the extension of the bids and a number of residents have made this comment to me that we have an obligation to bring this back to the taxpayers, given that this is the most cost effective solution. I understand that the option that we looked at back in twenty twenty three to possibly renovate this station, when you escalate that to today's numbers, you're looking at about thirty six million dollars to renovate this station, given the triggers to bring it up to code and, and that's not, would not even include uh the additional bay for the apparatus or uh many of the components that we need in that station for operational readiness. So um, this is the obligation we have in terms of doing what is best for the town um and looking to do what is most fiscally responsible. So, thank you.
Hey, Don, if I could just sort of revisit, you know, um, but the, you mentioned sort of ten to twenty thousand dollars in potential savings per bathroom and you certainly walked through some of the the logic there, you know. I could hear the next question on the street being, wait a minute, how is it that a public safety project or a public building project of any kind, whether it's a school or public safety or municipal building of any sort tends to be more expensive because of procurement laws and because of prevailing wage, et cetera? How is it that I can't likely get a quote for a new bathroom in my house for anything less than thirty grand and you're only saving you know, maybe twenty? So, you know, I, I'm, I'm putting that out there as I fully expect somebody's gonna ask a question just like that.
Right. Uh, well, yeah, it's, it's kind of simple, actually. You, you're still building the space. Right? So this, the space is still being constructed. You're just pulling off this, the stuff that's being added to the walls and the floors. So it's, it's those fixtures and finishes uh within the, uh, within the space. You're still gonna need lights. You're still gonna need some, some mechanical space in there uh in, in advance of what may, may be happening. So So um and I think the the biggest thing here with uh uh you know, public procurement. You do tend to have higher rates than you do in the private sector, but it it depends on who you ask.
Too, though, is right. I mean, we're building the rest of the building, so. Bills and the laborers and everybody else are already there. It's not like.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So uh and it's 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 interesting. When when you when you build a budget, everything costs so much money, but once it's in the budget, in this case, it's in the bid. Pull pulling those things out, it's it's generally not dollar for dollar savings from what what it costs to put it in.
Yep. Okay. All right. Thank you, uh Don. Thank you, Chip, for being here and appreciate having you.
Okay.
Colin, thank you as well, and I appreciate uh any day, Colin, anything from you in terms of. You know, thoughts with respect to these two discussion items.
I don't think I could put it any more eloquently than you already have. Um I think we we understand the position um the select board is in. And why you're going the direction you're going, and uh we support it as well. So I think that's all I would add.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that, we will move on to our next section, which is new. Thank you. New business and um we're going to uh discuss. An open meeting law complaint. Um this is seemingly one of many that we get. On a regular basis from uh. We'll just call it a common complaint. So um with that, Mr. Hearn, would you like to uh?
Yes, I I'd like to take you to take you through it as in a reasonably quick manner.
Yep.
We received an open meeting law complaint on July twenty-third, okay? It was a complaint about a response that I filed on behalf of a complaint filed against. The select board, but specifically you, Rob, and you, Joe, and the complaints in your packet. And uh uh there were, what I saw as numerous problems with that initial complaint. And it's in my letter, uh including that it's not filed timely. There's a strict time period. That you must file an open meeting law complaint, and it's within thirty days of the alleged violation. So we received this complaint on July twenty-third, which by my math is some summer seventy-one days. After the alleged violation, which is May fourteenth. And and the complaint says that it was. I guess discovered on July sixteenth, which is some sixty-four days after. So I plan to respond uh by stating that it's not filed timely. I and that um. It it's not filed timely and it's kind of. It it's a complaint about a com- an earlier complaint that was also not filed timely. It's kind of. I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but it's it's uh it's not, there are substantive problems. Or procedural problems, and there are substantive problems, and I plan to address them accordingly with your blessings. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from either my colleagues?
No.
Not for me, Rob.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Pat.
Can I just ask that you're okay with my May fourteenth response as a board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I will, I have have, I got an extension till Friday, and I will have a response to the A G by Friday.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we are now moving to old business. Um we have a. Uh common transfer of funds to Westwood Media Center. Per our Comcast and Verizon peg access funding agreements. So um. As folks are aware, we negotiated those payments from Comcast and Verizon and license agreements for funds. That are received by the town and then transferred over to Westwood Media Center as their funding mechanism as. Um our local access cable television channel. And according to section six of the Westwood Media Center Agreement. Um the operational funding for peg access, we have agreed to transfer these funds. So we will be looking to transfer the following amounts. We will be looking to transfer uh forty-two thousand four hundred fifty dollars and eighty-two cents. That was received by the town on August twenty-sixth from Comcast. Plus an additional four thousand four hundred and eight dollars and fifty-one cents received on that same date. And then uh we have also received thirty-seven thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Received from Verizon uh on August eleventh. And so that, and those are the amounts um. And are there any questions from either of my colleagues with respect to our obligations under our agreements?
Yeah.
No. I'd be happy to make a motion, Rob.
Please do.
Like to make the motion, select board approve the transfer of forty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars thirty-three cents from Comcast. As well as thirty-seven thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents from Verizon totaling eighty-four thousand one hundred seventy-five. Dollars and fifty-six cents to Westwood Media Center per the license agreement and the Westwood Media Center agreement signed by the select board.
I second that.
All right, we'll call Joe.
I.
Mary Ann.
I.
And I vote I as well. Okay. Next up, uh we have the West Suburban Veterans District Representative and alternate representative. And I believe we have to assign our representatives now that Chris has left. So Molly, would you like to lead this part of the conversation?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So as the board is aware, the town is part of the West Suburban Veterans District. That's a regional district with the towns of Needham, Wellesley, Wayland, and Weston to provide services to uh veterans in all of those communities. The former town administrator, Chris Coleman, served as the representative to that group. And due to his resignation, the select board must appoint a new representative. So today we are asking that the town appoint myself as the representative. And that Human Services Director Danielle Sutton be appointed to serve as an alternate representative.
Questions from either my colleagues?
Not for me.
Not for me. I'm happy to make a motion, Rob.
Please.
A select board to appoint interim administrator Molly Fitzpatrick to serve as the representative on the West Suburban Veterans District Board. And Human Services Director Danielle Sutton to serve as the alternate representative.
I second that.
All right, we'll call Joe.
I.
Mary Ann.
I.
And I vote I as well. Thank you, Molly.
That's a great board, Molly, and I love our new veterans agent. Great guy.
He is. He stopped by today. The new deputy, Dave, um also stopped by today, and so they'll be at the senior center. On September fifteenth for welcoming.
Oh, great. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have um a historical commission uh related issue. Um and we've been asked to consider and potentially reduce the required number of members. Um so Molly, is this one you will lead?
Mister Chairman, I'm gonna handle this if you, if please.
Absolutely, thank you.
So so we've had some um, I guess I'll use the word shrinkage in the number of people serving on the Westwood Historical Commission. The Historical Commission i- is an important board because one of the things they're charged with. Is they review potential demolition of older facilities within the town. Um and they've done a quite a good job over the years of saving certain parts of buildings and saving buildings. And right now, we have a seven member board, but we only have three appointees. So they can't even meet at this point in time. Uh so the the general law that authorizes this allows us to have three to seven. Uh what we're asking you to consider is reduce the number of members of the Historical Commission for now to five. So that they can meet and we can recruit a couple of members and maybe even recruit a couple of alternatives. So we don't find ourselves in this position moving forward. And nothing prevents you from expanding back to seven. Should uh should there be a great deal of interest in serving on this commission at this point in time? So I would urge you to consider reducing the number of members to five and try and recruit a couple of members. And perhaps even consider appointing in the future alternative members as we get people interested in it. And this, right now, we we stand to potentially lose valuable historical things. Without the abil- ability of this commission to operate. So I would encourage you to consider doing this. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from my colleagues with respect to this?
None.
Perhaps a question wrapped in a comment or more of a a comment. Um I I understand the importance of this body working. Um and uh for that reason. Um I I'm certainly in favor of reducing the membership. So that it can function. Um but with the hope that we can continue to recruit. And hopefully expand it um i- if we can find folks um to uh commit to that work. You know, I know we're gonna be talking about our board appointments at the end of our meeting a- as we do um at just about every meeting. And I think since I've been on this board since twenty twenty-two, I believe at every single meeting we've had, we have talked about vacancies. Uh that we have in town on our town boards and committees. And we are so grateful for all of the wonderful residents who step up and volunteer their time and their talent. To serve the town. Uh but the reality is, we're always looking for more people. Um and we know that folks are busy. Um we're we're all busy and, uh you know. We just seem to be getting busier and busier these days with technology and so forth. But we're always looking for people to stand up and volunteer and apply and grateful for those that do. So I think this situation is uh is highlighting um the the need. Uh and I'm just putting it out there. I know we're gonna be talking about it in just a few minutes. But uh I I'm in favor because the function of this group is so important. But I hope that we can all uh m- maintain the desire to continue recruiting. Um so that we can build this board back up.
So it I I agree with everything you've just said, Madam Clerk. Um and I hope that we can uh recruit people to do this important function. Because the, if we didn't have the volunteers we had, we couldn't run the town. That's the simple message for me at this point in time. And various boards fall kind of in and out of favor. Uh from time to time and then get revitalized. And I'm I'm hopeful the the Historic Commission uh can get revitalized fairly quickly. And you you have the ability to make changes, any, you can appoint or you can decide to make alternative appointments. If someone can't make a meeting, they can step in. There's some things that we can do um and and try and bring it uh. Bring it back up to where it was once was.
I I really like the idea of appointing alternates so that the board can continue to meet even if someone can't make it. Um Pat, I have two questions. One is um what isn't hap- isn't able to happen currently? With this board not being able to achieve a quorum?
So if there's an older facility in town, a house, and someone wants to tear it down. What happens if they can't meet is they've got like a six month wait window and it gets torn down. Nothing gets saved. The Historical Commission will take a look at those facilities and actually do some research. And say, you know, how can I put it? The best example I can give you is the Obed Baker House. The Beehive Oven was a valuable piece of history that we want to try and save. There was things in the Colburn School that we wanted to try and save. And it doesn't mean the house isn't gonna get torn down, but it, we might be able to save certain historical artifacts. That are important to our community. And that's not happening right now. They can't even meet. It's someone files an application and and if they don't meet, i- it it times out and we can lose. We could potentially lose valuable items.
So on a related question that builds on sort of Mary Ann's comment. As you think back to when this board was, where this commission was sort of um at its peak and functioning really effectively. You know, maybe a lot of people don't think about um what type of background might lend itself to being part of that. So when you think about the people who tend to um populate a commission like this, what type of background might they, you know, consider?
Well, any, it depends, architecture.
Yeah.
Uh history. I I'm thinking off the top of my head. I mean, uh you know, uh someone who has. A longstanding knowledge of New England history might be very valuable. And. It, so the the only limit is their imagination and how they want to do it. Is how I would answer your question.
Uh and you know, we have many a lifetime resident here in town as well, who, you know, remember this community when it was. A very, very different, you know, look and feel and everything else, so they may also be.
So if I may put it in perspective, my wife tells me all the time she went to school at the Colburn School. So i- it's those, i- i- it doesn't have to necessarily be people who've been here for a long time. But people who are interested in preserving history, I would say is the most important attribute that you can get.
Okay, thank you. Um so uh I would entertain a motion, I'm in favor of reducing the size. And then, you know, potentially expanding uh the number of alternates to be to allow for a little more flexibility. And the and the Historical Commission's ability to meet. Um Joe, can I get a motion from you?
I'd be happy to, after I thank Pat for his excellent synopsis in the beginning. And give a huge amen to Mary Ann for plugging the volunteers and for you too, Rob. That's, you guys are absolutely right. It's uh it's so important to our community. So that being said, uh I'd like to make the motion, select board, reduce the membership of the Westwood Historical Commission from seven members to five members. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, Section eight D.
I second that.
All right, we'll call Joe.
I.
Mary Ann.
I.
And I vote I as well. Okay?
And Rob, if I may, I I agree. I think we should try to revisit the idea of adding the alternate members at a future meeting.
Thank you. Yes, I agree.
Absolutely.
And as Mary Ann alluded to, our very next agenda item and item is uh appointments and reappointments. We have a few nominees and I would uh turn to Molly. Would you uh tee up the nominees for um different consideration?
I would love to. So we have a number of considerations this evening. The first is the Town Parambulator, my very favorite role in the community. Steven Springer would like to be reappointed for another three year term. He's been serving as the town's parambulator for a number of years now. The Westwood Cultural Council, a nine-member board currently has four openings. Joan Murphy would like to be reappointed for a three-year term. I had the great pleasure of uh sitting with Teresa Laham, the Chair of the Cultural Council, and interviewing two candidates. Rena Kehoe and Jane Hart, both outstanding individuals with incredible backgrounds. Um really passionate about the arts, all different kinds, and so both candidates are being recommended for appointment. And then Youth and Family Services Advisory Board currently has three openings. Katie Colehart, the Director of Youth and Family Services, and I had interviews the past few weeks with three candidates. Kate Scales, John Carey, and Aileen Ricketson, all fantastic residents. All coming with a lot of different perspectives, and all three are being recommended for appointment this evening.
Right. And then uh we have a a couple of. Right. And then, uh, we have a, a couple of, um, other vacancies. I noted, um. One vacancy due to a resignation on the planning board, which is an elected, uh, position that we are, we will be jointly appointed with the planning board later. But, um, there's some other vacancies, right?
There are. So currently there are vacancies on the Conservation Commission, the Commission on Disability. The Historical Commission, which we talked about previously, Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee. Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Recreation Commission, and the Westwood Cultural Councils. So, all of these vacancies are gonna be updated weekly on the town's website. Um, I heard what you said, the question you posed to town council about what backgrounds people should have or could have if they're interested. Um, I think that's a very interesting way. So I'm gonna work with our social media team here to craft some. Recruitment strategies based around that question. People, you might have an interest in this and this is how this could translate too. So. That's how we'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks.
I'll take history for a hundred now. All right.
I think that's a good strategy, if I may, y- you know, perhaps when people see, you know, what, you know. Wha- what it is that folks on these boards do and, and what kind of background might be helpful they might see in themselves.
Yeah.
That they could really, um, uh, you know, contribute in a significant way. And as the nominees we have, uh, for tonight's show, um, and we'll be discussing that. Thanks, Molly.
So, if there are no questions about the nominees, I would, uh, entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to. Um. Before I do though, uh, Mary Ann and Rob, I'm sure you did the same thing, but I was pretty impressed with the, uh. With the submissions that we got and the candidates that we got. So I'm very excited about that.
Indeed.
Yeah. Select board to vote and, uh, make a motion, select board vote to reappoint, appoint the following individuals. To reappoint Stephen Springer as, to serve as the Town Parambulator for a term to expire on June thirtieth, thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. To reappoint Joan Murphy to serve on the Westwood Cultural Council for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. To appoint Renana Kehoe and Jane Hart to serve on the Westwood Cultural Council for a term. That expires on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. To appoint Kate Scales to serve on the. Youth and Family Advisory Board for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. And we can work on that. To appoint John Carey and Aileen Ricketson to serve on the Youth and Family Services Board with terms to expire in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. To appoint Robert Silprezio of the Western Police Department as an ex-official member on the Youth and Family Services Advisory Board. With the term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
I enthusiastically second that motion.
Joe.
I.
Mary Ann.
I.
And I vote I as well. And Joe, I couldn't help but, you know, we observe the same thing. We are blessed really in this town to have so many talented people as residents. And very, very thankful to those of you who are stepping up to give your time and your talent. Because it's what makes a community. So, thank you all and, uh, congratulations on your appointment and or reappointment. All right. So, we will now go to our select board liaison reports. Um, Joe, anything to report from any of yours?
Uh, not at this time.
Mary Ann?
Not at this time.
And, um, I have basically the same. It's a quiet time of year with a lot of people out of town. So. Um, that will take us to approval of minutes. And did you all have an opportunity to review the minutes that were sent around by Tish?
Yes.
All right. Any questions with respect to either?
Not for me.
Very good. All right. Joe?
I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion, the select board approve the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
I second that.
All right, we'll call Joe.
I.
Mary Ann.
I.
And I vote I as well.
And I'd like to make a motion, the select board approve the regular meeting minutes for July ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
I second that.
We'll call Joe.
I.
Mary Ann.
I.
And I vote I as well. Those are now passed. And that brings us to our next meeting, which will be held on, um. Monday, September eighth, the night before our special town election at six PM via Zoom. Um, so we'll see folks here. I hope everyone has had a great summer. And enjoys the rest of the runout through Labor Day and we will see you the week after Labor Day. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd be happy to do so. I make a motion, uh, to adjourn.
I second that.
All right, we'll call Joe.
I.
Mary Ann.
I.
And I vote I as well. Have a great night. Enjoy the rest of your summer, everyone. We'll see you on September eighth.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Nice job, Rob.
Hey.
Thank you.